Okay, moving on to our, just for the record, our city attorney Scott Snyder has joined us this evening. Moving on to our next item this evening is on page 59 and is item 6D of your packet. It is ordinance 1988-20. And I'm turning the floor over to Chief Hernandez.
Good evening, council, and good afternoon, mayor. This is being returned at your request, and you asked staff to take a little bit more, to make some changes to the document that we provided in the discussion session. And it is the mayor's current compensation rate is $1,500 per month or $18,000 per year. It recommended that the salary for the mayor be increased by $650 per month to $2,0250 per month, or $27,000 per year. Mayor serving in the capacity shall not be eligible for medical or other benefits and shall not accrue sick or vacation leave. The mayor's base salary will be allocated as provided for in the 2020 budget. The increase will impact the general fund, electric utility fund, water utility fund, stormwater fund, and information technology fund. Expenditures in each of these funds are currently trending below budgeted amounts and should be able to accommodate this increase. In addition, general fund revenues are trending slightly higher than budgeted amounts as well as amounts received in the previous year during the same time period. And so we're bringing it back at the council's request.
Attorney Snyder, did you have a question? I see your hands up. Wait, hold on, you're muted.
Wanted to address an issue that the council had received from one of your citizens, Mr. Ringus.
Okay.
As I communicated with the city clerk, the governor's emergency proclamation of May 28th, remove the ordinary and necessary requirement. The governor's orders realized that at that point, cities had been conducting business for over three months and that there were other things that needed to be done. That's the opinion, for what it's worth, also of the municipal research services center. I guess I shouldn't be surprised in today's world that some citizens may think it's the attorney's function to make excuses for his client. I view it as telling you what the law is and the parameters of your decision. I'd rather be fired than wrong, frankly. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Council, I can open up the floor for discussion if you'd like. We do technically need a motion to open the floor. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, mayor. I move to establish a new base salary for the mayor of $2,250 per month, or $27,000 per year for the ceremonial and other regularly established duties of the position of mayor.
Councilmember Morton?
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Whalen and second by councilmember Morton to establish a new base pay for the mayor of $2,250 per month, or $27,000 per year for the ceremonial and other regularly established duties of the position of mayor. Mayor Protem, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, mayor. And recognizing this as the ceremonial proportion of a mayor's salary. This is a salary that will be established and it will be the salary established for the future. And any, we can always increase and so forth, and we can use a lot of different means to quantify that. But this is now going to be within ordinance, the salary of present and future mayors until changes are enacted. Am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is my understanding. Attorney Snyder, is that your understanding as well?
There we go. Thank you, mayor. Yes, it is. Again, during the term of office, as so long as the mayor doesn't vote, the council can increase the salary. I think the main point about this level is, once established, it would continue. And should an incumbent be elected to the position of mayor, that is, it will establish a floor below which the salary cannot go. Was I still muted?
Nope, we heard you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Morton, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you, mayor. I completely agree with Mayor Protem with his statement. But also, this is resetting the base salary for the mayor's position moving forward. And it is appropriate to do so considering the amount of time that has gone by without any, without a raise for the mayor's position. And I think it's an appropriate amount based on the numbers that we saw from the percentages that were shown in the council or the packet as well.
Any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, mayor. I think this is an important discussion that we're having, and we've had it for, what, three or four times now as city council? And I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, the comments of other city council members. I would like to go to our code of 2.06 at paragraph B under 020 of the City Administrator. And it says, "In the absence of the appointment of a city administrator, provisions of this code refers to the duties and responsibilities exercised by the city administrator shall be referred, interpreted to refer to the mayor." Now, historically, if we look what has happened for us with our mayor and the work she's done for our city since being elected, we had a city administrator for a short period of time in 2019. So based on our own code, it gave our mayor authority to take on the reins of work that had been previously done from a city administrator. We of council should have stepped up in fall last year when we did our budget for 2020 and said, "We recognize then the work you're doing, and this level of this position needs to be raised regardless of who's in it. But you have taken the reins and done this work." Now, when we look at what we're talking about for now, 2020, even though it wasn't in the budget approved, we're only talking a difference of $750 a day for the end of this year in this budget year. And we're looking that we've already allocated $7,500 for the rest of the year for her regular salary. So taking the $750 for the new salary element, we're looking at $37,550 plus $7,500. It's only going to be $11,250 till December to recognize and say, "This position has advanced. It's not what it was recognized as before. We've seen the difference in our city. We see the growth in our city. We see the staff that has been hired in this city." And it's something we've needed to do for a long time to give the base level, if that's what we're doing right now, which on item D is, is that this salary level needs to be raised regardless of who else is in the position, five years, six years, two years, whatever down the road. But for me, you know how I am about the budget, and I don't like to do things mid-year. But then I think $750 a month, that's not a lot. It really isn't a lot with our whole budget to give that position something more that it really needs. So I'm, we also have to look at what's been done this past year. We've had to, two union contracts, major contracts, working through the system. We had a major development. We did not have a city administrator doing any of this. So what do you think she was doing? Yes, she worked with the attorney. Yes, she worked with her staff. But she was at the helm. And for people to say, "We are not transparent," I take offense at it. We have talked about other things in the budget, but this, what specifically, this agenda item, I think we are not suffering to put out $11,250 in the budget for the rest of the year. And then when the budget term comes, when we start working on 2021, we may say, "Hey, you know what? Yeah, let's change this position up. Let's change it up for the rest of its time. Let's do it." But right now, we can deal with this specific budget and say, "Yes, we can do $750 a month." That is all that's being put out till December. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Mayor Protem?
And I didn't want to jump in before anybody else had a chance to comment. Just understanding that this is the salary for the position of a mayor elected into, elected in the city of Milton. This is not a 40-hour-a-week job. This is, I think the words have been ceremonial side of things, with, with total management responsibility. But this is that portion of what we're speaking about. It's a modest raise from where the position pays today, which has been being paid that for about the last 20 years. And this is just incrementally changed for the CPI, which is a very modest change. Correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, I hear a little noise. But this is, the mayor's, the mayor's position has never been a full-time paid position, and this reflects it. The previous salary reflected it, this reflects it. Additional work that is placed upon the needs of anyone within the city is something different. That's the subject matter we're going to speak to in the next issue. This is a modest change, an appropriate change, and it's, we have, we have cities around us that have mayors that have other assistants in place that that salary for just the mayor is in the $70,000 to $80,000 range. We are still far below regional salaries. But it is a good move, and hopefully in the future, we may use other means and methods to calculate further compensation for the mayor. But it'll be a broader-based understanding than what we're doing today. This is warranted, though. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, councilmember Lyndon?
Thank you, mayor. Just to dovetail on councilmember Whalen's comment, it's important, you know, as we're looking at agenda item 6D, that 6E, which is also part of tonight's package, is just important to bring up to the citizens that we understand that 6E is far different than what we are proposing here in 6D, raising the base layer level of salary for the mayor. And I think it's appropriate, and I support it. And I also hear your comments, especially regarding things that are more focused on our next agenda item. So I just want to put that out there that we appreciate the comments that we got. We are listening to them, and hopefully we will continue that discussion into our next agenda item. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Gillespie?
Yeah, I actually want to reiterate what all the other councilmembers and the Mayor Protem have stated. This is, I believe, has been well long overdue. It needed to be done. I like the fact that we are separating it into the mayor's salary to what we're going to be discussing on 6E tonight. But I support this 100%. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Whitaker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've always felt that the mayor's salary for ceremonial, I should put it, versus ceremonial tasks has always been low. And I know that the mayor has also done, in the past, has also done other things. I do feel that, you know, is long overdue. And you have to remember, this is purely for the regularly established duties and the ceremonial duties. And in that regard, I'm for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Whitaker. Councilmember Johnson?
I'd like to ask Attorney Snyder a question, please. When it comes to salary commissions and everybody's bringing up the salary commissions, I want to share a little thing I found out from a city that I will not name at this time. In June of 2016, they had an ordinance that raised their, their mayor's salary, monthly compensation to over $5,000. What is interesting is that a month later, they created the salary commission. Now, my question is, who appoints the salary commission?
Of the city council.
So it's the city council that appoints, not the mayor?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Because that's an important point for people to understand as well. And that was, and the other part, we'll wait till next time. Thank you.
Councilmember Lyndon?
Thank you, mayor. Sorry about that, I muted myself. Just for discussion, could you tell us, if you were to break down in percentages, how much you would say your duties are ceremonial versus administrative? If, you know, 50/50, or what, what number would that be? If you were, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, that's fine. You know, COVID kind of dampened anything that has to be ceremonial. But I would say, well, if I was doing the job as described or doing the job as I, I do and take on.
Well, hmm, could, well, how about both? If?
I guess if I was doing the job as I thought it was the day I took office, it would probably be 60/40, maybe, being 60% being ceremonial and 40% being administration. I would say today and the last year, it is probably 80% administration and 20% ceremonial. I would love to do more ceremonial, but there's not 15 hours in a workday. So that's probably, if it wasn't COVID, I'd say 80/20. So 80% being day-to-day operation administration and 20% being out in the community doing ceremonial activities.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Mayor Protem?
Well, thank you, mayor. The term ceremonial mayor, I don't think there is any such thing in the strong mayor realm. It's part of what you do. Ultimate responsibility for the administration and the functionality within the city lies within the mayor's preview. That's more than ceremonial. And that, that needs to be acknowledged. And I just wanted to restate that. I don't think it's a, by any means, a ceremonial position in itself completely. It has a far greater reach for a strong mayor's responsibility to be, to be exercised within the city. Just saying.
Mayor Protem, I agree with you 100%. I actually didn't like the word ceremonial used in the agenda motion, to be honest, but was not involved in this agenda item, so I didn't feel the, it was appropriate for me to ask it to be changed. But really, a ceremonial mayor is what they say is a weak mayor, which I don't like that word either. It's usually not a strong form of, a strong mayor form of government. We use the word ceremonial mayor, so. So I appreciate you recognizing that. Our attorney has his hand raised.
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to add a little more depth to my answer to councilmember Johnson. A good, the, this is one of those situations where the mayor appoints and the council approves. So I apologize, I want to be clear. This is a required confirmation, and both the mayor and council are involved in the appointment process. The citation is RCW 3521015. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, Attorney Snyder. Councilmember Johnson?
I'm sorry, thank you for letting me go again, mayor. You know, it's one thing that this council in the past has never, I don't believe the Mayor Protem could correct me and senior councilmembers could correct me, have really populated up strong thoughts about what strong, a strong mayor is and the appropriateness of income to a strong mayor. Now, when we look at RCW 35A.12.100, you know, I don't see in there the word ceremonial, and I hear duties and authority of the mayor. The mayor shall be the chief executive and administrative office, administrative officer. So the people that voted for the current mayor, I don't know if they saw, well, this mayor's only ceremonial and did not know what the true definition and the duties of the mayor are. Now, the city has never stood strong, I don't believe, of saying, "Wait, we're going to put everything into the mayor position regardless of who is in there as an administrator, city administrator, whatever." But by definition of 35A, she, the duties are encompassing that role. And, and I lost my other thought, I'm sorry. But I would, but it's, even if you have, I'm going back because people are saying they want a salary commission. And, and I'm talking just on this one right now, whether they're both together or individually. A salary commission can actually, what's the word I'm looking for? Be selected appropriately for an end. And so why can't the citizens trust the council to say, "We are impartial. We look at the budget, we hear you, but we also want you to hear us because we know what's happening in the city. We've seen the difference with the staff in the city. We've seen the professionalism in the city. So we only want this type of mayor. We hope in the future, we will always have this type of mayor." So that's my bandwagon. I'm over, sorry.
Councilmember Whitaker?
Thank you, mayor. And to play, because again, a different term, devil's advocate. I've talked to a few residents, and their issues, they aren't in this case but, or in the situation, but they said sometimes, even with this that we're discussing right now and the, and the next agenda item, because some people have been financially strapped through, over the last few months, that some people could look at it, that some residents could look at it that, "Well, I'm, you know, I'm hurting financially, and the city's going to give a, you know, a raise to the, to the mayor, and I've, or I've got potholes out in the streets, and, you know, I need those potholes fixed." And so those were things that were brought up to me from some people that I talked to.
Any other questions or, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, councilmember Whitaker. I also heard the same word. That's why it's so difficult. But the sad thing is, we failed to recognize this in the 20 budget, 2020 budget. So there are people suffering, but there are people that are going back to work now. We had a stimulus, and I saw potholes on 13th Street the other day. I see this, I seen the striping on the streets this week. So the staff that has been hired is able to manage the city with the mayor getting jobs. And I'm not going to take it away from the COVID. This is, this pandemic year is something I hope we never experience again. But I still feel at this time that we have failed last year, and this is a time for us to say, "Okay, we were wrong. We should have recognized that the mayor's position has been unfunded since, what, 2002, whatever, $18,000," and using a CPI. We do see people in the society are still getting some raises. Yes, there are people that are on furloughs or have not had their raises. But that's the burden we're going to have to carry with our decision.
I just want to make something clear, just in case something Councilmember Johnson said may be taken incorrectly. The city of Milton has not furloughed a single--
Oh, no, no, no.
I didn't say that. We've actually moved forward with raises and staff increases, and no employee here has lost pay, no employee that's been furloughed, nothing. I just want to make sure that's clear, it's not taken out of context.
Yes, I did not mean that. It was at the governor's level that I was hearing it, so I should have said at that level. Thank you very much, mayor, for the correction.
No problem.
Clarification?
Clarification. Chief Hernandez?
Based on the conversation that the council has had, whoever, if you make a motion tonight, I would just quote it as, "I move to establish a new base salary for the mayor of $2,250 per month for $27,000 per year, period." And then just cross out the rest of the line.
Councilmember Johnson?
I saw councilmember collapse the sort of, I think--
No, 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 I was just going like that.
Oh, okay. So, chief, am I hearing you say to amend the amendment to say, "I move to establish a new base salary for the mayor of $2,250 per month, or $27,000 per year?"
Period.
Okay. It's also recognizing that we're actually paying in this year just a little over $11,000, of which, of which, $7,500 was already allocated, so.
Mayor?
Hang on, I'm sorry, there was side discussion. I think there, I think staff is questioning the math, so I'm not trying to-- and Councilmember Johnson, we're trying to get the math done correctly.
Well, let's see, 1,500 by five months, is that not $7,500? And then 750 for five months, is that not 3750? And add it those together, it's $11,000?
Okay, sorry. 2250 times five months. She's doing it the old school way with pen and paper, hang on. So it might be wrong. So are we talking about the combined, the new salary of 2250 for five months? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm getting 8250, actually. Oh, thank you, thanks for bringing this up.
Well, that's, for the total?
For the total, yes.
Well, that's better than 11. If I'm wrong, I'll take a lower number.
And that's trusting my, my very rusty long division here. I'm five months, it's 11. 11,250, you were right.
Long, yeah. Sorry, Zoom makes it unfit, bad.
Our city clerk just wants me to clarify that that total $11,000 already includes--
Yes.
--the current budget amounts.
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry, councilmember Lyndon?
Thanks, mayor. Circling back to chief's comment, I like the ceremonial, I like that last state, statement in the motion personally, because-- Um, because what we're facing is the administrative duties versus the ceremonial duties. I see it somewhat divided that way, even though maybe on the ground it doesn't look that way. But it seems to, um, make a nice dividing line between, um, is, item six A and six D, six E and six D, excuse me. So, um, just sort of my two cents on, on that for what it's worth. Thank you.
Just a suggestion, council can read it as is or make amendments?
I guess if you, I, I guess my one concern is if you are going to amend the motion, then you have to amend the ordinance. And so it's really worth going through all that, probably not. Um, but Councilmember Morton?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say that we, we have a motion on the table. And I don't personally see a need to, for that slight change in wording. I think it's fine. Um, that's my opinion.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to go back to and ask, uh, Councilmember Linden, you, you made a, you made a request and it confused me. And all this discussion after that has, has continued to confuse me. You had asked for something to be removed from someplace?
No, um, I, um, Chief, if I understand what happened correctly, uh, Chief talked about, um, adjusting the word ceremonial in, um, in item six. And, uh, and then, so there was just a short side discussion, um, from that. So I think the motion still stands as written and, uh, I think that's where we're at. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
I believe that to be totally correct, that's supported in our code exactly, that the ceremonial road and the, uh, you, you might say the heavy administrative role is in the mayor's preview. And it is ceremonial and regularly established duties, of course, they're identified in code. I just wanted to clarify that from my mind, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Whitaker?
Really is my last one. Michelle, to, to ask, because I know there's probably some citizen in Milton who wants this question. Yeah, so are the funds, the funds are there to pay for this minor increase for the rest of the year, correct?
That is correct, yes.
But those are coming from all the different funds that were mentioned in the, okay?
From the general fund, the electric, waters, water funds and I.
And I agree with, um, Councilman Johnson that we did drop the ball. We should have done this last year, this should have been in the, you know, in the budget. And then we wouldn't be going through this and, and, you know, being scrutinized with, for, you know, this pay increase that, as I stated earlier, I think not, I think any mayor in, in Milton, this, you know, the salary should have been much, you know, higher than it was. And I think this is a, this is a fair increase from where it was.
Thank you, Councilmember Whitaker. Uh, Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, Mayor, I went to the city code and our city code said, chapter two point zero one is defines the mayor. That was repealed, uh, by ordinance fourteen forty-eight. So therefore, the only definition of a mayor we have in code is the one from the RCW thirty-five, um, from, um, are, under the city administrator and the RCW. We removed, um, I can't tell the year, but that section on the mayor was removed from the city code unless it's someplace else under the administrative and administration and personnel.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. It has been, where are we at? It's a move by Mayor Pro Tem Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Morton to establish a new base salary for the mayor of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per month or twenty-seven thousand dollars per year for the ceremonial and other regularly established duties of the position of mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried six zero. Moving on to our next, our, our last item this evening, it is on page sixty-five of your packet. It's agenda item six E, and this is ordinance nineteen ninety dash twenty, uh, compensating the mayor for the, uh, filling the position of city administrator. Chief?
Uh, good evening, council, again, uh, next item. Uh, the item was originally presented to city council on July sixth, two thousand twenty, presented again for further discussion during the study session on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty. At that time, it was recommended that two separate ordinance be presented to city council to establish a new base salary for the mayor for ceremonial purposes and other regularly established duties of the position of mayor and to establish additional compensation for the current mayor to fulfill the role of city administrator. During the meeting, it was also recognized that the city has a need for central leadership, either which a mayor performs, uh, city administrator duties or the mayor and a city administrator. This has become even more evident with recent developments in the city and throughout the United States related to COVID nineteen and emerging social issues. Central leadership is needed to effectively address these complex issues today and in the foreseeable future. So, you have it in your packet, unless council wants me to read the entire discussion, uh, I think this tees it up quite well for the council.
Do you need a motion to open up the floor for discussion? Attorney Sn, oh, Councilmember Linden?
Oh, um, I move to establish a new base salary for the mayor. Am I on the right one? Wait, excuse me. Um, I move to approve an additional compensation component for the mayor of five thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars per month or sixty thousand seven hundred per year to fulfill the role of city administrator through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Step on. A move by Councilmember Linden and seconded by Councilmember Morton to approve an additional compensation component for the current mayor of five thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars per month or sixty-six thousand seven hundred dollars per year to fulfill the role of city administrator through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Councilmember Linden, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, um, you know, long ago when we started this process, um, I think I was the second. And so I feel great about bringing this forward. We have a complex city and we're operating with a strong mayor and a weak salary. And I think we have to start to look at the, um, operational complexities that we face under what essentially would be a ceremonial mayor doing the duties of a city administrator. And I want to get, keep this discussion going. Um, I hear all the citizens' comments and I want to bring those forward in this discussion. And, yeah, I'd like to get this on the table and, um, and start, so thank you.
Councilmember Morton?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I do want to continue to have this discussion. And I believe that, um, not only the, the mayor's, the current mayor doing this position, has been working as a city administrator, but past mayors have been doing it as well. We've tried having city administrators before, uh, they have not lasted. Um, either stayed with the city for various reasons, moved on to other cities under their own regard. Or we've had to, we've tried having some of our other staff do these positions. That hasn't worked out because they're, they are overloaded. Uh, they have their own work to do. And so I think, uh, the mayor, the current mayor has been doing the, the work for the past two and a half years. And I think she should be compensated appropriately. Um, and so, um, I'd like to hear from the other council members. I hear the concerns of the citizens. Um, but I think it's an appropriate time to, to compensate the mayor for the work that's being done. She's spending an enormous amount of time at the city, making the city run efficiently. And especially with COVID going on and a number of other things, uh, with some of the projects we've had going on, so. That's my two cents.
Councilmember Whitaker?
Thank you. Um, I may be the slightly deceptive part of this. I almost feel that this item, I've been thinking about this over the past week and a half. And, um, I don't want to too quickly move on this because, because we should have probably dealt with this last year. And that's what I kind of feel like we're doing is to get the, I think there needs to be more study into it. I don't feel that it's, you know, not a good idea, but I know that city administrators are usually certified. They have education that specify in being an administrator. I understand, Madam Mayor, that you're doing the, you know, administrative jobs and, and, uh, other people have, you know, worked at places which is not the right thing to do is to, you know, they're doing a job that they're not getting paid for, not getting paid enough for. Um, that's why I feel we really need to look into this and budget for it, a city administrator for next year's budget, for sure. And I think we're also a victim, as I said before about the people who have been out of work and, you know, they, some people could look at this as just not good timing. I'm still mulling this over.
Thank you, Councilmember Whitaker. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. Well, you know how, you all know me well enough, I'd like to go into the history of something. So let's look at the history of the city administrator in the city of Milton. The budgets from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fourteen included a specific city administrator line at one FTE. The two thousand and fifteen budget line included a line for a city administrator at one FTE, but noted it was vacant. In two thousand and fifteen, the code two point zero, I'm sorry, two point zero six, zero point zero two zero was updated to state, in the absence of a city administrator, duties, responsibilities shall be interpreted to refer to the mayor or the mayor's designate. In two thousand and sixteen, the council assigned the city administrative duties to the chief on February first, two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and eighteen, ordinance one nine three four, code two point zero six point one zero one, I mean, zero one zero, updated to reflect the duties of the city administrator may be divided between two or more offices. The two thousand and eighteen budget was amended to include the municipal services administrator line at one FT, therefore, still pushing down on positions that were already overloaded, putting on a city further administrative duties. The two thousand and nineteen budget showed the salary range for the one FTE municipal service administrator as ninety-five thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars to a hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. The two thousand and nineteen budget chart of city employees show a municipal service administrator and a public safety administrator. In two thousand and nineteen, the city administrator position showed a minimum of a BA degree with a master's preferred and five to seven years in city, county, or public service government management. So on February ninth, two thousand and nineteen, the council ratified the appointment of a new city administrator. That administrator vacated the position on April, two thousand and nineteen, and the mayor assumed the duties under, as stated, in two point zero, two point zero six point zero two zero B of our code. And as I stated before, the code has nowhere says their ceremonial duties. It states, the mayor shall be the chief executive and administrative officer of the city, of which has been happening since last April. However, as I think about this, for me, in the budget, and I understand, I have faith in our, our staff of providing us the figures, I don't like large, large expenses, um, that include other elements mid-year. We should have done this, again, back when we did the budget, December, November of nineteen. I do support this, however, I understand how the economy is right now. I understand we don't know how it's going to go by the end of the year. I fully accept that our mayor is doing this work and we have recognized some of it with item six D to say, yes, we see you're doing stuff, we know you're doing stuff. We see the value that you have brought to our city and the pride we have in our city. But I also listen to the citizens and their concerns. Uh, that's why I brought up a sister city, you know? They approved the mayor's salary in a June and then a salary commission was later. The citizens spoke and said, we, you're not going to do this to us. I believe we have been transparent, I believe the mayor has been transparent. That is also why the question I asked about the salary commission. How do we determine if it's the mayor recommending to the city council? Is the city council, uh, willing, uh, to stand up and say, ooh, man, that's your next door neighbor or that's your cousin? No, they can't be on council. So it's a very difficult, uh, process regardless of what we do. For me, I support it, but my wish, for me, is it comes to the budget hearings. We put it in for next year, no problem. We'll know what the budget fully is. We are not, we don't even have our budget report for the half of the year. We had our first quarter to March, we, here we are in July. I do know we, revenues were left, late, uh, because of COVID, earlier in the season, earlier in the year. But we still have five months to go and we do not know what this governor is going to do. We do not know what the president's going to do. We do not know what the rioting in the streets are going to do. We need to keep our police department fully funded. We need certain things done. And for me, Mayor, I appreciate everything you've done, but I personally would prefer to see this go to budget hearing, I mean, a budget, uh, council. And we do work on the twenty twenty-one budget, saying, we want this included in the twenty-one budget. And then at that time, the citizens have the right, by then, God hope, I, we will be back and hear the voices of the people. Um, it was very hard for me to come to this decision, uh, but people have known when it comes to the budget, I'm, I'm unyielding. Uh, for me, the seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, that, that's just the baseline. Maybe next year, when we're doing twenty twenty-one, when you say, no, no, we want to really get that to the right level. Maybe we won't, you know, we don't know, but that's how I'm feeling right now and, um, thank you.
Councilmember? Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, a few questions. We're looking at total year numbers. I, I believe in this position, we're looking at sixty-six thousand. So the remaining of this year is less than thirty-two thousand dollars for budgeting. My understanding, we're talking with finance and finance at the finance committee. Uh, that was not an unattainable number. We're not talking about the full salary for the rest of this year. Yes, this will go in budget next year and we've opted, we wanted it to be put into the budget for a budget amendment this year. And finance recognizes that it's a very workable number. Now, you know, uh, something's been missed here. We've had about five or six, uh, administrators. Most of them went very short term. Most of them was recognized that we were always under-marketing our position and had a hard time finding somebody of huge capabilities. What we're looking for now is to have somebody at less than half of the base of the, or low, uh, low end of the salary range, perform the functions and the duties, acknowledging, okay, not everything in that job description may okay, not everything in that job description may be attained, but the performance has been exemplary, and it's worth that investment and recognizing the cost. I don't like spending extra money, but I think this is a warranted condition. There's a lot to say on this, so give me a moment just to reflect on this. I'm trying to remember what everybody else said. Everybody wants to sit back and wait a little bit. Okay. I think we've been discussing this and understanding that you have taken on these responsibilities for the last year and a half. And we know it, and we've allowed it to occur. We haven't spoken up very highly, very heavily about it. We were all willing just to let you sit back and go by and spend 40 hours a week, 40 hours a week here, and not do much about it. Now we're being challenged to do that, and I think we're remiss if we delay this any further. A decision, yes or no, is what we need to know. Now, are we going, are we going to, and we've talked about it before, are we looking for a community development director? Because I'm sure you're doing some of that work within your job also. That has to go hand in hand with our recent development with Lloyd's, things that are going on in community development. But we don't have that position either. Is the council now willing to consider funding both of those necessary positions that we've seen in the past? That's a question. We can answer that later. I have one reservation with this, and it's a question for the attorney. And yes, I see you still here. This is not a employee position. This is a mayor's position. It's not classified as an employee. It's just acknowledging the value that the mayor is putting into the city and increasing her compensation for it. But it is not an employee classification.
Correct.
Okay, because I know the RCW doesn't allow that and so forth. I have a, it's just a small outside concern with that, with the insurances, because I'm not sure if this is going to satisfy Washington insurances, because they required us at one other time to go through a separate review for insurance. It was, it was put, it was set aside and so forth. And I know that we had an unfortunate situation with somebody opting to do it by themselves. But does this satisfy the Washington insurance to recognize the person as being an employee? Not employee? But the council is saying this satisfies your requirement for us to debate this and give a go ahead. Would this ordinance satisfy that?
Well, it's not the ordinance, sir. The insurance compact determines who can join, and you ask a good question. Elected officials are subject to coverage, but whether it has to be all or none, I have not looked at.
It has to be a decision, and we have had this one other time where we were contemplating it for a terminally ill member. And it came up as a separate item to counsel, independent, not a rider on anything else, but an independent. And at that time, it was opted not to. Our previous circumstance is somebody just declared themselves an employee in the recent past and put insurance in for themselves, and that was totally inappropriate. I just want to be sure that if we say we're going to pay for insurance, this is satisfied the Washington insurance as a council's decision, which they require of us to provide that type of coverage.
Again, I have not contacted the AWBC insurance. I do not know.
Yeah, we may have to do another step, as I'm saying. If this doesn't satisfy it, it will have the name of the council that passes, which is almost as good as an independent. But as long as they understand that this is a termination clause, and this is for a specific time and a specific individual. It doesn't carry through forever. I don't want to see that, that we're making that decision, that mayor's quote will have insurance. Okay, I've complicated life, I'm sorry.
No, you haven't. Any other council members have questions, comments, concerns? Would you all mind if I answer a couple of the questions that I've seen come through? Are you good with that?
Not at all.
You're not good with it?
No, no, certainly good with it. No complaint, not at all complaining. Go ahead.
I did read, I did read some of, I heard all of the public comments that came in. It is hard to read some of the things that I read, but I just want to clarify a couple of things. I believe in transparency and I believe in honesty, and I can honestly tell you, I did not get involved in this discussion. I had heard through the Milton rumor mill that council was thinking about bringing it forth last year. And I had specifically said to a staff member that I didn't think it was appropriate to come to council prior to bargaining or during bargaining. I just thought it wasn't fair to the employees that work here to have that be part of their bargaining, you know, I guess, decisions. I did hear that, or actually two council members, but one council member came to my office and talked to me directly about it. Another one talked to a staff member. I did have reservations of council moving forward by bringing this up during COVID. But I believe that there is never going to be a good time to discuss this. We don't know what's around the corner. So I just, you know, I just want to make it clear that I did not, I was not involved in the data collection. I was not involved in the pre-discussions. I was not involved in any aspect of this. The first time I saw the agenda was when it came to my desk, when I approved the overall package for that first July meeting. I'm not holding council hostage. I'm not saying if you don't pass this, I'm not running again. Again, I'm just being honest and transparent. I have, for some of you that don't know, I'm a business owner. My business has suffered greatly due to being mayor. And many of you don't know, I think only one staff member knows, I was actually enrolled to finish up my bachelor's during my, when I became mayor. And I had to unenroll because the duties that were put onto me did not allow time for me to even do my schoolwork. And I wasn't going to let the daily duties here just go to the wayside and not move forward. So I unenrolled from school, and I took on the roles that I was, I don't want to say forced to do, but I was forced to do to make sure we succeed. So when people say I'm not educated, if you read the descriptions, you only have to have a bachelor's. I am very close to having a bachelor's, but I think that my life skills and life experiences, my job experience far outweigh that little piece of paper that I would get with another six months of school. The other thing is, is I look at our surrounding cities. Fife is not a strong mayor. We can't compare to them. Edgewood is a strong mayor, and he fills the role of the city administrator. We're not doing anything different than other cities are doing. Federal Way, I believe they're a strong mayor and have not filled the city administrator role. Again, not doing anything out of the ordinary. There's nothing we're trying to hide or skate by. I think council just has said, Mayor, I recognize the work you're doing. I recognize the vision you have. I recognize where we're going, and we want to continue to move forward in that fashion. So I'm not holding council hostage. If you don't pass this today, or next month, or in January, it is what it is. But I don't want you to think I'm holding you hostage in a sort of way. Lastly, I know Councilmember Johnson hates budget amendments, but we do it quite often. You all did a budget amendment this year for $50,000 to get the chief a new car. There was no comments made about $50,000 but budget amendment. So we're looking at $27,000, $28,000 for the rest of the year, half of what we paid for a car. For someone who is here 40 hours a week, plus the weekends, plus the evenings, to make sure that Milton is moving forward in the right direction. I think that is everything that I truly disagree with in some of the comments that have been made. But again, I want council to know, you don't vote for this today or tomorrow or next month. I'm not holding you hostage. I'm just being honest. I cannot fulfill the role at the capacity that I'm doing for a second term. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you for your comments, Mayor, and I appreciate them. When I think back to the chief's car, that amount was already budgeted in the 2019 budget for the police department, I thought. And that's why I, I thought we had already allocated that were going to be certain things brought in under the 2020 budget for the police department. There's no doubt on budget amendments that we've had to some. Part of it is too for me, and this is very difficult for me, and I will say it, point out. I see the work that is being done, but I would ask that we're going to have a budget hearing. We're going to have budget discussions. Why can't we wait till the six-month period, when the six-month budget review comes in? And then in the very first of the August, put it on the agenda in August after we've reviewed the half of the year and go from there? I'm, I'm, that's just how I'm feeling. I wish we could have extended a little bit longer for a final decision to allow citizens who were in fully supportive view to come on and say, yes, you should do this on August, your next meeting. I am shocked and pleased that there are 15 people, but unfortunately, they're all negative, except for maybe two. And I'm glad that people have come on. I wish more people would come on when it's just a good thing happening of rather controversial, not good, but a non-controversial topic is what I mean. I recognize, you know, we are, we're sort of a hybrid compared to Edgewood. Edgewood went all the way and said, I don't know, I could not find their minutes. But there was no, there was no, I don't think there was a, what's the clause, an ending clause date? I don't understand why if we in a city are really want a strong mayor, why aren't we just going full heart out like Edgewood and doing a deputy city administrator or whatever? That's what I'm asking for. So let's just, if it's, we can see, I would approve it next year, just right now. I, and I've slept on this, and at this point right now, I just can't.
Member London?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Johnson, thank you for the history on where this has been and how it's traveled through the city budget and stuff like that. I really appreciate the work that you did, so thank you so much for that. I don't personally have a problem, you know, putting this off to August just to get a little bit more time for citizens' comments. This is just, you know, with COVID, and we're meeting via Zoom, giving a little bit more time for this to get traction with the citizens, as it's starting to do. I welcome their comments, and I don't want it to appear as if we're doing something backhanded or manipulating anything. The mayor is acting as our city administrator, and we all know that, and we all feel that people should be compensated for the work that they're doing. So if this were to wait a little bit longer to get a further picture of the budget, that makes good sense to me. And also getting a little bit more time for citizens' comments. I think that, I think we, I don't think it's unreasonable to say that we owe that to our citizens, especially with the atypical meetings that we're having. So I'll just put that out there, you know, and I still support the mayor and support paying people for the work that they do as appropriate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember London. Councilmember Morton?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say one other thing, and it's something you actually mentioned a moment ago. I had written down that I wanted to say. And it's one of those things that comes up, and it always pops up when these things about raising, whether it has been council pay in the past or the last 10 or 15 years. It's been about, and when it's come up about raising the mayor's pay, I know in the past, the past couple of mayors, it always comes up that it's not a good time. There's always some reason why it's not a good time. There's union contracts, or there's an economy downturn, or there's the state cut some kind of funding, you know, liquor taxes, or whatever it might be. And I just think that the more we wait, the more there's always going to be some excuse why we shouldn't do it. So I don't think there's any reason to wait. We're going to go into budget season, so it's a short period of time to the end of the year to fund this through an amendment, budget amendment. And then we're going to go into budget. We can budget for it next year. And then we can look at it again as we move into budget season. So I have no problem with moving forward with it today.
Councilmember Lesby?
Yeah, I agree with, you know, majority of what everybody is saying. But I think one thing we need to remember is that we have a finance director and city staff that have provided us a lot of information. And we count on them to give us the facts. That's why they're the professionals in this. And I feel sometimes that we may not be listening to them appropriately and using their expertise to kind of guide us down the right path. This is something that, yeah, we definitely need to look at to budget into, you know, find a way through our budget. But for where we're standing right now, I don't know that that is that big of a problem right now with what the information that we've been given by the staff and our finance directors to go ahead with this. And so I'm with Councilmember Morton that I would support this right now.
Chief Hernandez?
I just wanted to say something. I mean, I've been here for six years now, most tenured exempt staff here. And I'm not lecturing by any means. I am just trying to paint a picture of what day-to-day operations are like here and have been here. I work seven days a week, all hours of the night. The mayor works seven days a week. The direct reports, which normally would report to a city administrator, are reporting to the mayor. Like Councilman Johnson stated, in 2019, he lost the individual that was fulfilling the role as a second deputy administrator. And so it was being co-shared. And I can tell you during my time as acting as a city administrator, it was very difficult. And some of the police department suffered with me not physically being in the building and having to manage the rest of the city. And we talk about COVID-19. While other people stayed home, the essential staff were here, including the mayor, putting herself into harm's way, making decisions with me as the emergency management, because if you read the code, she technically is in charge of emergency management, delegates that responsibility to me. Hour by hour, day by day, as COVID started to unfold, decisions were being made in the city regarding public safety. The mayor, I have been an elected official. The mayor, as the elected official, was having to make those tough decisions. And I thought to myself, I'm glad I'm not an elected official right now, because I wouldn't want to make the decisions that the mayor was having to make. She relies on the expertise of her staff to advise her, and then she takes that information and she made decisions regarding the welfare of the citizens, the welfare of the employees, who is going to come to work, who is not going to come to work, what the alternative work schedules were going to be, authorizing me to make the appropriate purchases of personal protective equipment for employees, for citizens, and how we were going to handle this crisis. And she has been here day in and day out. There's times where I dreaded having to make the phone calls repeatedly to the mayor, knowing that when she ran for office, this was not even close to what any individual would think that they would be doing as the mayor for the city of Milton. And then to walk in here and lose your city administrator or your deputy administrator and have to shoulder all that responsibility. And I can tell you, as of late, just because of the way that it is with And I can tell you, as of late, just because of the way that it is with the police department staffing, I am doubling down as a police officer. I don't have time. I do my best to relay my information to the mayor as I'm available, but I might be in a management meeting. The other day, matter of fact, I was at a management meeting and my staff came over and said, we have a deceased person, we need you right now. Because I was the second officer, the only officer available to go out and respond to that call to do a death investigation. And so again, my question is, if action isn't taken, how long does a person have to be a martyr? She's been doing this since 2019. And if she decided tomorrow that she wasn't going to do this, who's going to do it? I, I think it's just a, a question of fairness. I have read the public comments as well. And I don't know. I'm just trying to paint a picture of what it's like around here. We are all very busy. The mayor is very busy. And ultimately she has the final say as the CEO and as the administrator of the city. And I'm not running the city. The mayor is running the city, but she's not being compensated for it. And I think that, you know, some people say, well, she's taking this on. She's taking it on because there's no one else to do it. There's no other choice. And the thing that I'll tell you of knowing and judging people's moral compasses, she's done it because her moral compass is in the right direction and she's doing it as a martyr. And I just hate to see it continue. So with that, I'll leave it be.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'd like to make a correction from me. I was in error when I said the RCW have the word ceremonial. And at the end of the paragraph, it does say the mayor shall be the official and ceremonial head of the city, except in illnesses. So to address the chief, I don't think anyone on council is saying our mayor is not worthy of this because of the worth and the commitment and the choice you and she both made. I guess wonderful employees, as well as every staff member in the city gives more than 100%. I don't think anyone is saying, we don't want to do this. I'm saying, I'm just saying, let's do it in August. Let's give it some more time. So more and more people know that those people that fully support will show up and say, yes, we know it, we want it. No one is saying we don't recognize this. I want it in the 2020 budget, you know, definitely 2021 budget. Yes, it should be. I'm just saying, let's wait till August. Maybe, maybe we'll be able to have people in, in the public come and speak rather than, it's intimidating to speak on Zoom for people. And it might, you know, it's just my own personal. And believe me, this is very difficult because I, it's like, well, you can't recognize the mayor then if you're not going to approve it tonight. And I go, no, I do. And then the choice was made, but we as council again failed. We knew it was being done last year. We knew it and we didn't do anything. And all I'm saying is let's wait till, let's wait a little bit longer, get more inform, make sure more information is provided, that people understand why we're doing this. And then I will commit. Now, I would definitely approve the city administrator line in this money in the 2021 budget. I have no problem. You know, I'd approve the mayor being more of a city administrator and getting a deputy city administrator. I have no problem with that. And I'm offended when people say she's not qualified. The woman ran her own business. She's handled contracts. I mean, it's, that's a slam on her. I'm not slamming her. I'm slamming the aspect for me and my own personal concept of budget. I mean, shouldn't a budget amendment been with this now? So we saw where everything was coming from? That's all I'm asking for. I would support this. I'm just saying, let's wait till August. It's only one month. But again, I'm one person. I've shared with council how I feel. And I don't want anybody telling me I don't support the mayor because I do. This has been a very hard decision for me, very troubling this past weekend to make this decision.
Mayor Portem?
Well, thank you for my second chance at speaking here, or third chance. We've gone to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has gone to the Finance Director. We explored the potential expenditures here and had all the assurances that the health of the budget and the appropriate funding would not be very difficult by the allocations that were afforded to the different funds to finance this, this year. So anybody that's on the Finance Committee knows that that's not a particular issue. I don't know why, what's going to change between now and August? Seriously, what's going to change? You're worthy today, you should be worthy then. If you can't find the worthiness in it today, I'm not sure you're going to find that in the future if you're going to be able to stand up to that. So with that, we do have, do we not have a action item on this?
We do.
Okay, let's, let's, we need to walk it back. If, if, if the consensus is here is that we don't have enough understanding wherewithal or trust in what we're being told or the information or the numbers, let's walk it back and bring it back the first meeting in August. Does that satisfy, does that satisfy everybody's depredations about having enough information?
We do have a motion on the floor, so I would suggest that if you want to bring it back, then we need to vote and you need to vote no, and we'll bring it back. Is that, Attorney Snyder, is that how we should do it? Hang on, you're muted.
You could do it that way. Also remember that a motion to table to a date certain is a non debatable priority motion. So you could take, you could do either.
Mayor Portem?
Motion to table this item until the first meeting of August. Does that satisfy that?
Yes, sir. With the second, again, it's not a debatable motion, so you just vote. Second.
So we're in favor of moving it, all?
I need to vote, hang on. It's been motioned by Mayor Portem Wayland to table, excuse me. Yeah, been motioned by council member, Mayor Portem Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Linden to move back to table the discussion to our first meeting in August. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I'm going to do roll call on that one, just so we have everyone. Councilmember Linden?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Portem?
Aye.
Councilmember Gillespie?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitaker? Councilmember Whitaker, can you unmute yourself?
Aye.
And Councilmember Morton?
No.
So motion carried five zero, excuse me, five one, I apologize. So we will bring it back to our next council meeting in August.